Special Education Budget Hearing Meeting is called to order. Please call the roll.
Ms. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Hassan?
Here.
Ms. Jessling?
Present.
Mr. Tuttle?
Present.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who has the report?
Thank you, Madam President. The purpose of this meeting is a presentation of the Fiscal 2021-2022 Special Education Title I-A, Title II-A, Title III-LEP, Title IV-A, IDA-B, and Early Childhood Preschool Budget. This is a regulatory step in the process so that we can allocate these budgets in September.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Good evening. The August 10, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wade, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Hassan?
Present.
Ms. Jessling?
Present.
Mr. Tuttle?
Present.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the August 10, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Next, we'll have approval of minutes for July 13 Regular Board Meeting and July 30, 2021 Special Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Now, hearing of the public on agenda items only. Next, we'll have superintendent's report and recommendations, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 5A-1 through 5A-4.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, this evening we are pleased to recognize several staff members who are being honored for their commitment to their schools and their students. We will begin with our excellence in teaching award winners. Mr. Buckley, will you please join me at the podium to present the awards? And if our employees, our award recipients are here this evening, as soon as I call your name, if you'd come forward at that time. Excellence in Teaching, Tatiana Savetavec, first grade, Sterling Morton. On a regular basis, Ms. Savetavec seeks new and innovative ways to reach her students. She engages, encourages, motivates, and celebrates her students daily. She eagerly takes on obstacles as a challenge and perseveres for the betterment of her students. Ms. Savetavec does an amazing job with showing her students the power of a growth mindset. She had instilled it in them in every part of their daily routines and lessons. The students can be heard repeating the growth mindset affirmations. They constantly cheer each other on when one of them is challenged and even when they talk themselves through challenging hurdles. Ms. Savetavec sets a high bar for all of her students and then equips them with the confidence to reach their potential. Congratulations. Next up, Lori Kiss, first grade, Hopkins Elementary. Mrs. Kiss is a role model and leader who continually works collaboratively and does not hesitate to step in to help others. Mrs. Kiss continually motivates her students, making them excited about learning, participating, and especially reading. Walking into her classroom at any point of the day is electric and engaging. Mrs. Kiss thrives on teaching her students to read and knows how to reach the most struggling reader as well as challenge the exceptional learner. Mrs. Kiss has been instrumental in educational shifts, especially in reading, and she continually strives to learn and perfect her craft for the benefit of her students. Congratulations. Kim Petro, nurse at Mentor High School. Mrs. Petro has been a committed professional to not only her health profession but to the mentor schools for over 20 years. She has proven her professionalism by effectively managing and maintaining Mentor High School Clinic for a student body of 2,400. Mrs. Petro's work cannot be measured by student accomplishment but rather by student safety, including physical, emotional, and mental health. In all of these areas, Mrs. Petro excels at an accomplished level. She is empathetic and engages in active listening. She is a problem solver and works to help others improve their everyday life. Mrs. Petro recently retired but has left a positive mark on mentor schools for years to come. Congratulations. Mackenzie Saywell, fourth grade, Ridge Elementary. Ms. Saywell is truly a passionate teacher who demonstrates a zeal and enthusiasm for her profession. Her passion is contagious and is reflected in her students and colleagues on a daily basis in and out of the classroom. She graciously assists new teachers daily while guiding them through routines and procedures, planning lessons, using technology, and understanding the curriculum. Ms. Saywell is and always has been highly successful in the classroom as demonstrated by student achievement. She is strongly aware of addressing the diverse needs of students in her classroom. She uses multiple assessments to measure progress and to differentiate her instruction based on students' needs. Her students show interest in school and learning because Ms. Saywell makes learning fun for her students while at the same time holding them to high standards. Congratulations. John Weingart, Physical Education, Sterling Morton. Mr. Weingart is passionate about physical education and our students. Mr. Weingart is well-respected by everyone at Sterling Morton. He is admired by our students for his gentle kindness and fun- He is admired by our students for his gentle kindness and fun, creative ways. He creates an environment where students embrace good sportsmanship and effort as much as competition. In his class, everyone enjoys themselves and learns the value of staying physically fit, regardless of skill level. Because of the culture he has created, every student finds a way to be successful and enjoy himself or herself. Congratulations. And last, from this category, Christine Weiss, Intervention Specialist, Memorial Middle School. Mrs. Weiss's room and M.D. unit could be nicknamed "The Palace of Positivity." Even amidst challenging situations, Mrs. Weiss inspires her team to work through things with a smile and continues to provide the best education possible for her students. She has a gift for working with students with special needs, and we are fortunate to be able to witness her passion for her craft on a daily basis. Mrs. Weiss is always adapting and creating new techniques to find what will make her students successful. Mrs. Weiss is always willing to listen to the issue and, more importantly, help develop a research-based plan in which to help remedy a situation. Congratulations, Mrs. Weiss. Madam President and members of the board, at this time, we will be recognizing very important groups for their excellence in team collaboration. To be selected for this award, the team members must demonstrate enthusiasm for their responsibilities and a strong commitment to the school system. The team must also be respected by colleagues, parents, and students, and demonstrate strong collaborative skills. The first group is our Certified First Grade Team from Hopkins Elementary, Bernadette Elam, Lori Kiss, Molly Miller, and Kaylee Overly, if they could come forward, please. The Hopkins First Grade Team has an outrageous zeal and enthusiasm for teaching. They readily collaborated, shared ideas, and divided and conquered their planning and implementation of the first-grade curriculum online. The team helped each other and/or learned on their own until they perfected their plan. This team always plans together, and they push each other to be the best at their craft. The First Grade Team closely monitors student data and readily implements interventions. They take on the needs of students and immediately provide the needed support. Every member of the team is a problem solver. If individually they don't know the answer, they will work together to solve the problem. They are always looking to create fun and interactive lessons to engage and excite those students about learning. Congratulations, First Grade Team. The second group is our Certified Second Grade Team from Mentor Schools Online this past year, Jalina Andrews, Megan DiAlessandro, Justine Host, Mandy Morgan, Lisa St. Hilaire, and Jasmine Vensen. This is a group of teachers who had no experience working with one another until joining together from five different elementary schools to teach second-grade mentor schools online. They took their second-grade curriculum and resources and converted them on digital platforms in addition to creating new, innovative, and engaging means to teach second graders content standards. In order to meet students' needs, this team utilized their expertise, organization, and collaboration to group students from each of the six MSO classrooms to maximize their resources and provide differentiated, small-group guided reading lessons to all students. In addition to the creativity they displayed, they planned and delivered periodic, grade-level-wide activities aligned to the content standards they teach. These special events were engaging, relevant, and exciting for students to participate in. Their passion, dedication, and motivation to think outside the box in order to provide an innovative educational learning environment for their MSO students was noticed by all who observed and interacted with this team. Congratulations, Second Grade Team. And our final group, from the Excellence in Team Collaboration, is our Certified School Counselor Department Team from Mentor High School. That would be Cindy Gomori, Annie Harum, Megan Howell, Kathy Crzan, Jim McMahon, Mark Nemanitis, Miranda Rhodes, and Caroline Surson. During the 2021 school year, to accommodate the changing needs of students and parents as they related to COVID-19 protocols, the Guidance Department reworked their procedures for scheduling by providing stakeholders with videos introducing the scheduling process and collaborating with staff to use technology efficiently while maintaining the one-on-one assistance that the guidance counselors value. Their efforts resulted in minimal disruption, and the plan allowed parents to take more of a role in conferencing and scheduling for their students. The Mentor High School Guidance Team worked collaboratively throughout the 2021 school year to cooperatively solve many unique student needs caused through the remote learning environment during the COVID-19 pandemic. Congratulations to this counseling team. Madam President and members of the board, nominations are also collected every year for the Outstanding Service Award. To be selected for this award, a nominee must demonstrate enthusiasm for his or her responsibilities, a commitment to mentor schools, and have the respect of their colleagues, parents, and students. The two winners selected this year fit that criteria perfectly. It is our privilege to first start with Erin Kuzmiak, Classroom Assistant, Sterling Morton. Ms. Kuzmiak continually goes above and beyond in her responsibilities and commitment to the staff, students, and all of her responsibilities. She enthusiastically brings creative and innovative ideas to anyone in the building, whether these ideas are for the classrooms she works with, other classrooms, or throughout the building. Erin continually searches for different ideas to engage the students she works with. She often shares many resources with staff with whom she works and even with teachers that she no longer works with. Ms. Kuzmiak is always on the lookout for resources that will help any student or teacher, and she shares these with excitement. Ms. Kuzmiak has taken the time to learn new ways to solve problems in order to best help the students with whom she works. She's always looking to learn something new to be the best she can be. One more round of applause, please, for Ms. Kuzmiak. And finally, Bill Miller, Custodian at Shore Middle School. As the head custodian at Shore Middle, Mr. Miller is a highly valuable member of the team. The 2021 school year brought on many challenges, but no matter the request, Mr. Miller followed through with a smile. His flexibility and ability to adapt is a key reason why the year was such a success. He is an invested member of the school safety committee and is always willing to help students. Mr. Miller is a wealth of knowledge when it comes to logistics concerning the building as a whole. He is always looking for ways to improve the physical grounds of the building and works closely with staff to ensure that visions align. He's a humble leader that is the first to tackle a task and the first to give credit to others. One more round of applause, please, for Mr. Miller. Congratulations to all of these award winners. At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Burnett to the podium to recognize our newly-designated master teachers.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wade. This year, we have two new master teachers that have joined our teaching ranks. The Ohio Department of Education defines a "master educator" who demonstrates excellence inside and outside of the classroom through consistent leadership and focused collaboration to maximize student learning. A master teacher strives for distinguished teaching and continued professional growth as specified by the Ohio Standards for the Teaching Profession. Teachers understand student learning and development and respect the diversity of the students they teach. Teachers know and understand the content area for which they have instructional responsibility. Teachers understand and use varied assessments to inform instruction, evaluate, and ensure student learning. Teachers plan and deliver effective instruction that advances the learning of each individual student. Teachers create learning environments that promote high levels of learning and achievements for all students. Teachers collaborate and communicate with students, parents, other educators, administrators, and the community to support student learning. And finally, teachers assume responsibility for their own professional growth, performance, and involvement as an individual and as a member of the learning community. Please congratulate the following teachers who have received Master Teacher designation for the 2021 school year. I'd like to recognize Mackenzie Saywell, fourth grade teacher at Ridge Elementary. And our final recipient this evening, please congratulate, Ally Rushke, Health Physical Education Teacher at Shore Middle School. And if we could give the award winners one more round of applause, please.
Thank you, and congratulations again to all of our staff members this evening for their awards.
All right. We're going to take about a seven-minute break. If there's anyone that would like to head out early, you're welcome to stay and join us. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Next, I have the following Board of Education policies on the agenda for a second reading and approval. Please note there's been a modification of Policy eight-point-oh-nine since the first reading, where a sentence has been stricken from the policy. I am recommending approval of all three policies.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C-one, Related Certified Personnel, and C-two through C-four, All Related Human Resource Matters.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Board of Education Report and Recommendations. Under Business, do we have a delegate and alternate to be appointed to the annual business meeting at OSDA?
I'll volunteer for that. Ginny, did you want to do that?
Tom?
I raised my hand.
And does someone have number two?
I believe that's Mr. Porter.
It is recommended that the resolution authorizing the revision of compliance officers for calendar year 2021 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Motion's passed 5-0. It is recommended that the COMDOC Agreement for the District Copiers and Printers be approved. That material is included with the Board Materials.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And we have one final item under this section. That is to acknowledge the hiring of Mr. Bill Wade as our CFO/Treasure at the Friday, July 30th Special Board Meeting. After successfully serving as a teacher and administrator for Riverside Schools, Bill joined Mentor Schools in 2011 as Principal of Mentor High School before being named Superintendent of Kirtland Schools in 2016. He rejoined Mentor Schools last summer as Director of Business Operations until he transitioned into his CFO role last week. Mr. Wade is uniquely qualified for the CFO role with his educational background blended with his business expertise and knowledge of our district's fiscal practices. We look forward to the contributions he will make to keep Mentor Schools moving forward. Mr. Wade, would you like to say a few words?
I would, thank you. Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Porter, it's with great pleasure and honor I've accepted the role as Chief Financial Officer for Mentor Schools. I want to thank Mr. Avasik for his leadership during the transition, as well as Mr. Wilson for his years of service for our district and our community. I know I have big shoes to fill, but I'm confident my years of administrative experience, coupled with my background, prepare me to continue to lead our district financially into the future. I'm excited to work with our Board of Education, our Treasures Department, our staff, and our community to ensure that we provide our students with a safe learning environment to help them maximize their potential as they continue through their educational experiences, all while staying true to our five fiscal management principles. Again, I appreciate your trust in me. I look forward to working and serving this community.
Thank you, and welcome aboard. Next Legislative Report, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryner. Updated COVID-19 Guidance for K-12 Schools announced. The Ohio Department of Health released updated guidance for K-12 schools regarding COVID-19. ODH and the Ohio Department of Education expressed the importance of students returning to school in person five days a week, but will not issue any mandates in connection to the recommendations. However, in order from the Centers of Disease Control, mandates masks on all public transportation, which includes school buses. Additionally, the CDC indicated that vaccinated individuals are not exempt from this mandate. That would be the school bus. The updated guidance stresses the importance of vaccination and mask-wearing for those who are unvaccinated. Additional guidance is provided on the following: improving ventilation, social distancing, handwashing, regular cleaning, staying home when sick, participating in sports and extracurricular activities. Local school boards can implement broader precautions as they work with their local communities on the return to school. Dr. Bruce Vanderhoff, Chief Medical Officer for ODH, provided the following remarks on the return to school. While there are no mandates, 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 there's no A, mandates associated with this guidance, we believe that the recommendations we are issuing are essential to the health of Ohio's youth and the success of the coming school year. The safety of Ohio's children is paramount, and the preventative measures that schools take will help protect Ohio's students. Interesting to note, House Bill 370, introduced by Rep. Adam Byrd to require public schools and chartered non-public schools to create a seizure action plan for each student with a seizure disorder and notify all school employees with direct supervision of the student, to require all school employees to annually complete one hour of training on seizure disorders, and to require each student to receive age-appropriate instruction in seizure disorders. The topic continued with House Bill 373 by Rep. Catherine Ingram of Cincinnati, to require public schools and chartered non-public schools to create a seizure action plan for each student with a seizure disorder and to notify all school employees with direct supervision of the student, to require all school employees to complete epilepsy and seizure disorder training every two years. So the difference between the two being, one says every year, one says every two years. Due is to, will come forward later. Senate Bill 209, introduced by Senator Andrew Brenner, to prohibit after the 2021 school year, the State Board of Education, ODE, and school boards from mandating masks to any person who is on the school's premises, including those attending in-person instruction, school-sponsored athletics, and school-sponsored extracurricular activities. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. OSBA Student Achievement Report, Mrs. Hassan.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryner. I'm going to share some of the success stories across the nation. The first one is the mastery focus helps students learn at their own pace. School officials in Cleveland and Columbus are focusing on mastery in summer schools and the upcoming school year to personalize learning and help bridge achievement gaps stemming from the pandemic. The approach assumes that all students are at different place in their learning and offers them the support to progress at the pace that is best for them. The second one is schools seek to recover enrollment loss in fall. U.S. schools that experienced enrollment decline during the coronavirus pandemic are looking to recover students in the fall by reaching out to families. They're doing it through home visits, through phone calls, conducting school tours and other efforts. Without recovering lost enrollment, districts face a loss of funding. According to the data, every racial and ethnic group saw enrollment decline, with white students showing the steepest decline. And I just want to mention, if any of the teachers are present or anybody wants to share any success stories from Mentor Schools, they can send me their email, and that will go in the Success Newsletter with the OSBA, and I know we do a lot of good things, so if you think it's worth sharing, we can be just there. That covers my portion, so thank you.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officers Report and Recommendations, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Madam President. Request approval of our financial statements for the month of July, as well as our investments, appropriation modifications, supplemental appropriations, our petty cash funds, our student activity purpose schools and budgets, as well as the resolution for the estimate of aggregate maximum amount of public monies to be awarded to public depositories.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. That concludes my portion.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? No? Any new business for the Board? No? Next, we'll have Hearing of the Public on Agenda Items or Any Items.
I walked in here with shock to see all of you sitting there miles apart from anyone with masks on. If you're sick, stay home. If you're not sick, you don't need a mask. The problem is not that people are uneducated. The problem is that they are educated just enough to believe what they've been taught and not educated enough to question what they've been taught. Ron Paul said that. Substitute the word "taught" with the word "told." The problem is that they are educated just enough to believe what they've been told and not educated enough to question what they've been told. The last school year was tough for everyone. It was especially tough on our young children and teens attending or trying to attend school. Each day, a little more was asked of students and staff. Change everything that you have been doing to get educated. Stay home? Don't stay home. Lockers? No lockers. In-person? Virtual. Don't wear a mask? Wear a mask. All this for children who, if they get the virus, have 99.998% chance of full recovery, according to the CDC. This is according to the CDC. We all looked it up. Did we do this for the bird flu? SARS?
No.
Regular flu?
No.
H1N1?
No.
How about the swine flu?
No.
Did we do this for the swine flu? No.
Yeah, we pulled the vaccine after seven deaths.
You know, my mother always said, "If your friends jumped off the Brooklyn Bridge, would you follow them?" You all probably heard the same thing from your parents. I guess she meant, "I needed to think for myself." Well, I'm asking the school board to think for themselves. The students have been hurt. They've been hurt by the school for a full year and have not recovered from that hurt. They've fallen behind in schoolwork, in school or virtue. They miss seeing their friends, hanging out with them. They haven't been able to see the smiling face of their teachers or classmates because you covered their identity with masks. Some have even committed suicide. If you don't believe that, look it up. You know, freedom over one person's physical, freedom over one's physical person is the most basic freedom of all. People in a free society must be sovereign over their own bodies.
That's right. If you don't believe that, I'll talk about that.
Ron Paul said that too, by the way.
Thank you. Your three minutes?
Oh, okay.
May we have your name, please? Please state your name, and we do have a three-minute limit per speaker. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Peggy McCracken. I'm a retired teacher, mostly at Reynolds, which a lot of you are also aware of. I'm going to talk about two things tonight. First of all, the Mentor School Board has a policy manual, and I want to talk about Chapter 9, Section 14. It talks about harassment and words and actions that create a hostile environment. Words that are intimidating, offensive, abusive, threatening, or unwelcome. Mrs. Bryner, did you hire a company called Better Lesson?
Better Lesson?
To give an in-service?
I am not aware of that.
Mr. Porter, did you know?
Apparently, we did. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with all of our vendors. Apparently, we did.
Anyway, you're taking my time, so I'm going to go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
I gave you three slides. There are 66 in their program. I can only stomach three. The first one asks, an essential question. How can I be a co-conspirator while using a curriculum rooted in whiteness? So then they define a co-conspirator. A person whose actions combat racism through direct challenge to or subversion of racist structures and institutions. The third slide, which is as much as I could stomach, confronting self. And they have words in there, like actively doing work to tear down those beliefs, beliefs and structures that are pervasive. Those beliefs and structures don't exist in primarily white or privileged institutions. They thrive there. That's part of their presentation to our teachers. Did you think any of that was threatening or abusive, Mrs. Bryner? They're teaching our teachers to teach their children this stuff, and they're coming here with a militant attitude to cure a problem that doesn't exist.
Good evening. I think we're going to go back and forth between masks and diversity all evening. Amanda Alefe, I'm a mentor parent, and my son is at Shore, my daughter's at Orchard. I want to begin by thanking you, Mr. Porter, for your most recent video message in which you confirm your decision to make the masking of our children and staff optional. I appreciate your understanding of the fact that there are strong opinions, obviously, on this topic, and that you have taken those into consideration. I also assure you that I and other parents that are here this evening represent a significant contingency of your staff, who feel the same way as we do, but just do not feel comfortable expressing that publicly for fear I've... They fear for their jobs, and they fear for their working conditions. I guarantee you, there are a significant number of those that feel the same way that we do. Having said this, I still feel compelled to address you this evening regarding the continued concern that in the end you will require our students to be masked for another school year. And I ask you this honestly. Do any of you know how many COVID cases there are currently in Mentor? As of this morning, I checked the Ohio Department of Health's website. There are 36 confirmed COVID cases in the past two weeks in the Mentor ZIP Code. 36? 36 cases in the past two weeks. So there is not a surge in this ZIP Code in this area. The media and those in power would have us believe that there is one. There is not. It is not true. So I urge you to keep the optional masks in our schools. There is no reason not to do so. Our children's social and emotional health is too important for us to gloss over this. This is not just about a virus that is not surging, but it is about social and emotional health of our children. If this does not, if this changes, I will be telling my children, they have my permission to enter their school buildings without masks. I think you're going to have a number of those on your hands as well, so I urge you... You know, the main thing that's bothered me about this pandemic from the very beginning is that fear has ruled the day. The media and the government and everyone has tried to make us scared of this virus. And I learned growing up, my father taught me growing up, that making decisions based on fear is never going to yield a positive outcome. So I continue to plead with you to make these decisions based on the facts. There are 36 confirmed COVID cases in Mentor right now. That does not warrant masking our children for another school year.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Annie Payne, and I am a Mentor resident. I would first like to thank you for making masks optional currently. I understand that this could change in the future, and short of a mandate, I would like to address why changing optional masks to mandatory would be risky. I have no doubt that all of you are concerned about our children's overall health, especially when it comes to COVID. You see, I am too. However, the lens in which we look at this issue is vastly different. I have lost family members in the past to suicide. I am greatly concerned with the mental and physical health implications of prolonged fear over time. We know that chronic fear can cause serious health consequences, such as changes to our physical health, our memory, brain processing, and reactivity, and our mental health. It can also cause depression and anxiety. Since the CDC provides a lot of guidance for schools, I'd like to present some imperative information from the CDC as well. Per the CDC, during 2020, the proportion of mental health-related emergency department visits among adolescents aged 12 to 17 years increased 31% compared with that during 2019. The CDC also stated that young persons might represent a group at high risk because they might have been particularly affected by mitigation measures, such as physical distancing, including a lack of connectedness to schools, teachers, and peers. Barriers to mental health treatment increases in substance use, and anxiety about family health and economic problems, which are all risk factors for suicide. Only four months into the pandemic, the director of the CDC, Robert Redfield, stated that "There has been another cost that we've seen, particularly in high schools. We're seeing sadly far greater suicides now than we are deaths from COVID. We're seeing far greater deaths from drug overdoses that are above excess that we had as background than we are seeing from deaths of COVID. The children deserve and need normalcy in our schools. The district's safety vision statement says, 'Together, we will ensure a safe learning environment.' Safety looks different to everyone. For some, a mask does provide some security. As for others, a mask causes physical and mental health consequences. A mask, for some, is risky.'" You see, if you require -- you see, if you require masking, you are contributing to the irrational fear of a virus that so infrequently affects children. Children have enough stressors and do not need to be constantly reminded to be afraid and scared. We should be more focused on the risks associated with anxiety, depression, and chronic fear than the minuscule risks associated with COVID in children. Where there is risk, there must be choice. I will remind you again of the oath that you all took when you were elected into office. You swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Ohio, and as such, the power of any decisions that directly affect the health of our children, such as masks, should rely solely on the parents' shoulders and not in the board's hands. Thank you for your time.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Wade, Mr. Porter, as you know, my name is Amy Freeman. I live at 7281 Taff Street here in Mentor. My husband and I have been married for 23 years. Mentor is our home. We've been here for 22 years. This is where we are raising our family. We're very devoted to the city and to the school, as you all would know. But my -- first, I would like to thank you, Mr. Porter, for your decision, making masks optional. That is very important to my children and to our family. So sincerely, I thank you for making that decision. So we -- my main concern tonight is masking of our bus drivers and our students on buses. We are in the Bellflower zone, so our daughter Sarah, class of 21. Our son Andrew, who's an 11th grader, and our daughter Ellen, who's an 8th grader at Shore. We all went -- they all went to Bellflower. So my concerns regarding masking our bus drivers and our students can be summarized into three categories. So the first would be safety. Like, have we really looked at the safety of having our beloved bus drivers wearing a mask? An early start school like Bellflower, there's a portion of the school year where our kids are out there in the dark. And then sports, plenty of sports. Our bus drivers are driving our kids home at night, northeast Ohio weather. So we all want our bus drivers to be at their best. And are they really going to be at their best without debating whether or not masks work? But if we could just assume for a moment that maybe masks can cause a headache, maybe they can interfere with your vision off to the side, maybe you could be distracted by the mask, maybe a little bit of reduced oxygen. Put all those things together, and the precious cargo that our amazing bus drivers are carrying, have we really considered the safety and the risk? My second question then, too, on that would be enforcement. Like, how -- what is the plan? How are we going to enforce this? Are we having -- I mean, are we going to deputize the 4th graders and 5th graders to make sure the kindergartners are wearing their masks? Are we going to tell kids, "You need to report your peers to the office if they're not wearing their mask on the bus"? Or are we going to lay that at the feet of our bus drivers when we're already asking them to do so much? So they're going to be driving a bus of kids in the winter, potentially at night, and they're also responsible for making sure all of our kids are wearing their masks? And my final point, or question really, is, from what I understand, the district has decided to follow legal guidance on this. And I think it's truly debatable whether that's the right decision, based on Ohio law and constitutional principles. But I would like to know, who is our law firm? Who is representing us? Who is it that made that decision for us, that the mask mandate should be implemented on buses?
Walter Heffner Field.
Okay, great. Okay, that's all I had. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you again for the mask optional decision.
President, school board members, my name's Aaliyah McCullough. I am a parent of three students that were in the Mentor district. I have pulled them this week. I want to start off with Tim Hammond. Thank you so much for pointing this and making this -- bringing this to my attention, that the morals that my children carry with them are what I give them. What you are teaching with Better Lessons is teaching hate and racism. What I've seen on those slides was absolutely disgusting, and my children will not partake in this ridiculous agenda that's being pushed politically. Absolutely ridiculous. Tim Hammond has lied to a lot of parents here, has lied to me many times last year about critical race theory. Go to the doctors -- I go to the doctors with my daughter last year, and she's reading her health history, and she goes, in front of the nurse, goes, "Mom, what racism am I --" What? Where did you hear that? In school? Online? You know how many times I closed my kids' Chromebooks and iPads because I did not agree with the lessons that you were choosing to teach my children? I will not partake in this, and these children do not deserve this. This is a political agenda that a lot of people are pushing, and it's ridiculous. And that's all I have to say. I am just -- it is disgusting. That Better Lesson Plan, you guys need to go back and look at that. Absolutely disgusting what those people were saying on those slides.
I am a parent of a student that goes to this school. I would like you to know that I just argued with my child for two hours because I told him, "He is not allowed to go to this school if you are going to indoctrinate my child." We are here tonight to inform you that we know you are forcing critical race theory under the guise of inclusion, diversity, and equity on our children. We know it's -- we know that it's CRT, and so do you. Woke-ism. Woke-ism leads our children to believe the hate of our country. The hate towards others and to hate themselves. My hope is that the only people going woke in the streets of Mentor are my fellow Americans waking up to what this school system is forcing on our children. You crossed the line. You know the rule. Don't mess with our kids. We, as citizens of Mentor, we pay for everything. We, as American taxpayers, demand that you stop the forced CRT on our children's psyche and let it be known that it's child abuse. We, the American taxpayer, must remind you, you are not indoctrinators. You are educators. We, the American taxpayer, stand here today because it is our duty as citizens of the United States of America to tell you, "No more." We are not going to take it anymore. You want to know why? Because we are, we the people.
Hi, my name's April Flag. I actually officially live in Willoughby, but my kids are -- their dad is in Mentor, and so they go to the Mentor schools. Right now, I'm just going to talk about the masks. Mr. Porter, thank you for your update, saying that masks right now will remain optional. You make me a little bit concerned because that's what you told us last year, and then at the last minute, it changed. But I'm also a little concerned about the hostile environment that you guys are creating for the children. And I -- my most recent was, I was on Facebook, which has caused most of this mess, and I saw a post from someone who you are close with, and they are running for school board, approving discrimination against children who cannot wear masks or choose not to wear masks. They said that some forms of discrimination have always been and always will be okay. And it's not like they are a person of color. It's not like they are gay, and it's not like they are disabled. This personally affects my son. My son is 10 years old. He is autistic and has a sensory processing disorder. We were planning on sending him back in so that he could be with his teachers and his therapists, because he really, really loves them. And I know that he benefits well from it, but he can't handle wearing a mask. He can't handle it. Honestly, he can't even wear long sleeves because it bothers him. And when I pointed this out, the people who are supporting this candidate and who you guys are close with and you're pushing for this, you know, diversity and equity and inclusion, said that I must be lying. I must be a lazy parent, and I must not care. And I -- and that my son, who is disabled, must be a murderer. And obviously, that I don't care if he goes and murders other children. This is the environment that our kids are going to be in. The other parents are teaching their children that if another kid, no matter what, even if they have a disability, they can probably tolerate it. And if they're not, they are evil, and they are murderers, and they are all these -- that is -- that's hostile. I'm sorry. And I know a little bit about being bullied, and that is creating a perfect bullying situation. And I'm sorry, but I'm a little nervous coming up here. But we decided to keep him home. I can't send him to school knowing that you guys are okay with this type of thing and that this is going on in the school. So my son now can't go and go and see his teachers. He's going to have to learn online, because I don't feel that it's safe for him. And he can't wear a mask. But because you're pushing the CRT and all of this, and under inclusion, it's okay to discriminate against my son, who has a disability and can't wear a mask.
I'm Betsy Harding, and my children are entering 8th grade at Shore and 10th grade at Mentor High School. I'm here to speak to you about the use of face masks and maintaining that they will be optional at the start of the school year. Masks are harming our children mentally and physically. COVID infection and transmission in children and adolescents is extremely low. Why are we still masking our children and our teachers when evidence shows that they are not spreaders of the COVID virus? Research shows that moist masks are a breeding ground for bacteria that is antibiotic-resistant and can undermine viral immunity. Do you believe that any student's mask would not be full of sweat, spit, or mucus by the end of the day, rendering them useless? Testing was done on used masks, which showed 11 dangerous pathogens, including other viruses, bacteria, microbes, and mold. Masks prevent the mirroring of facial expressions, which facilitates empathetic connections and trust between students and teachers. This can escalate to mental and behavioral problems. Without facial cures, teachers -- without facial cues, teachers and students of all ages are more likely to misinterpret one another. How are children supposed to develop social skills when they can't see or read another's face? Anxiety and depression in children has increased 63% since the crisis started. Suicide is on the rise, and the use of antidepressants has increased 25%. All of this will cause long-term effects on our children. A study of the effects of carmine dioxide from inhaled air within face masks showed excessive CO2 in the bloodstream, causing drowsiness, lack of focus, headaches, dizziness, and shortness of breath. This study concluded that children should not be forced to wear face masks. Mr. Porter has mentioned many times having a check with the lawyers. As a public school under the State of Ohio DOE, the city of Mentor BOE is granted sovereign immunity by the 11th Amendment. This means the district has immunity for tort claims or injury or death. In addition, House Bill 606, signed into law in 9/14/2020, ensures civil immunity to schools from lawsuits arising from exposure, transmission, or contraction of COVID-19 and any mutation of the virus. On the Mentor BOE website, under 9.01 Policy Manual, Chapter 4, parental involvement and education includes the following. Parents and guardians are full partners in the decisions that affect children and families. There are other Lake County schools that masks remain optional. Andrews Osborne, Lake Catholic, Willoughby Eastlake Riverside, and St. Mary's Mentor. I also remind you that Mentor schools don't have -- most of them don't have AC. They're very hot for the first and last months of the school year. Would any of you sit in an office for seven hours straight in extreme heat with a mask on and very little mask breaks? The classrooms will be at full capacity and that much hotter. I ask you to leave the mask ruling as is, keeping it recommended but optional. Let our families make the decision. The adverse effects of masking our children are not worth risk for their long-term physical and mental health.
Good evening.
I can take it the wrong way.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of my daughter, who is in 8th grade at Shore Middle School. She has severe anxiety, ADHD combined presentation. When she is masked, you can't tell when she's having an anxiety attack due to her biting her lips, the inside of her cheeks, and she does not speak up. Instead, she shuts down. How are we going to fix that for these kids if you guys make them wear masks? She is also soft-spoken. She is very -- you can't hear her when she talks, especially when she's wearing the mask. I see many of her teachers here today, and I'm sure that they can also say, "Yes, she is hard to hear." Making our children hide behind the mask is damaging to their mental health. My child also has asthma, and the masks make it harder for her to breathe. And on top of that, if she's having an anxiety attack, it's hard for her to get the mask off, because then it causes an asthma attack. And then, you know, it's even harder to get her inhaler and get the mask off. Now, this year alone, we had a big setback because of the mask, and my child, at one point, was afraid to go to school because she had to wear the mask. It got to the point where I had to call into the school and have somebody help me get her out of my car. We need to keep the masks as optional. I understand that some of you are wanting the mask, and there's a lot of us that don't want it. Please leave it to the parents to choose.
Hi, my name is Kristi Nazario, a mother of a kindergartner and going to be 2nd grader in Mentor School System. And clearly, see, I'm a minority here today, but that's okay. My concern is about the parent choice of masks. I'm having a hard time understanding why we're proposing to start the school year with less mitigation strategies in place when this variant that's now circulating is two to three times more transmissible. than last year's variant. Children may not die from COVID, but long COVID can lead to disabling effects like heart, brain, and lung damage. I live every day in chronic pain. That's the last thing that I want for any of our children, to have, you know, long-term oxygen use. You know, and this is happening in kids who are even mildly symptomatic or not symptomatic at all. 1,600 kids were hospitalized this week alone, up 21% from the week prior. You can look at Arizona. You can look at Florida. In fact, Arizona schools in Phoenix opened up without any mask mandate, parent choice. And within, I think it was less than two weeks, they had to have an emergency board meeting and put the mask mandate back in place because the numbers were surging. Now, my son started kindergarten when all this was beginning, the pandemic, and he says only had in-person school for seven months out of his seven years. He had to go on counseling because he was so overwhelmed, unable to focus. I mean, in-person school, the teachers were, pardon me. Online school, the teachers were great, but, you know, he just really needs to be in the building. I have lupus, as I mentioned. He's thrilled to finally be going back to school, but I cannot fathom a blow that another online program would be to him, what long-term impact that would have on his attitude towards learning. I just want to encourage you guys, since the start of the pandemic, Mener schools always follow the CDC recommendations. And I respectfully urge you to continue to follow the science. If I'm wrong, the worst thing that the kids have done is they had a mask on. If everyone else is wrong, your child could die or have lifelong issues. I think that masks- If you want to talk, get in line like everybody else has, okay? Thank you. My son deserves a safe place to go to school and not have to worry about getting COVID. We should be putting every mitigation strategy in place that we possibly can to protect these kids. And that is all I have to say. Thank you. He seems nice.
Is anyone going to- Wow. My goodness. Okay. Are we done? Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. My name is Lauren Marchaza. I grew up here in Mentor. I came back to Mentor to raise my kids here with my husband. I have a first grader at Hopkins and a new middle schooler about to start at Memorial. I'm here today, actually, to talk about masks, obviously, but I cannot leave this podium without addressing what you all are calling critical race theory. I'll speak louder. Is this better?
Yes.
Great. So, critical race theory is an understanding that who we are, the laws that we have in place, the histories that have been handed down to us have been shaped by race. Regardless of what color you are, it has been shaped by race. It is taught in law schools and graduate schools. In our public schools, however, where it's not taught, by the way. It is not. It is my turn to speak, okay? My turn to speak. I am speaking. In our public schools, our kids deserve age-appropriate and accurate history lessons, helping them become the critical thinkers that we need them to be, that we need them to be to make this a more just and prosperous and equitable country. Now, masks. Doctors are increasingly concerned that the COVID Delta variant has having a negative impact on our children. Maybe not yet here in Mentor. Maybe not yet. But it's coming. The number of kids hospitalized with the virus has been rising over the past few weeks. That's what the facts say. That's what the facts say. This now includes my nine-year-old niece. Is that enough for you? Because it's enough for me. Quiet. There is no telling which children will simply recover. There is no telling which children will suffer complications. There is no telling which children, however few they may be, will succumb to the illness. I, and as the Delta variant surges, even though it's not here yet, it does infect more children than previous variants. And I think, I think of Owen Caswell. Does that sound familiar? It should. Owen Caswell was a student in my son's class last year. And I watched as he was hospitalized, as his mother appeared on the news in tears, worried that she would lose him, that she would lose him. Have you ever had a hospitalized child before? I have. I have. And it is heartbreaking and traumatic for everyone. And I will not risk that again. Thank you to the board, by the way. It's a hard job, and I appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Lynda O'Brien. I'm a grandmother who moved to Mentor a year ago to be close to my grandchildren. I see this issue as much broader. It's an issue of control and division. I have 18 years of education. And in 18 years, I cannot help a fourth grader with math. Why is that? The system that served Einstein to Euclid worked fine for thousands of years, and we had to come up with a system that no parent learned when they were in college or in undergraduate school. Why? Because it divides us from our children. Relative to critical race theory, my grandparents came here in the turn of the century from Slovakia. They never called themselves Slovakian Americans. They were proud to be Americans. They never spoke their language outside of the household because they wanted to be Americans. And we're teaching our children to be everything but Americans. And that's wrong. My Creator gave me white skin. I didn't have a choice about that. But that doesn't make me an evil person. And slavery has been on this world, on this earth, from the beginning of time. And it hasn't just been blacks who were enslaved. There were whites and Irish and all colors, and they were enslaved by their own people. So it's not a matter of white people being evil. Now, having said that, my birth certificate says that I'm white, all right? I have a granddaughter in your school system whose birth certificate says she is black. And let me tell you, she is not African-American. She is American. A year ago, she turned to me and she said, Grammy, am I black? She never realized because her skin color doesn't define her. It's not our skin. It's not our nationality. It's not our religion. It's not our education. It's our hearts. It's our values. It's our virtues. It was said many times, from George Washington to Tocqueville and to Reagan and to Lincoln, there's three things that are, two things that are required. It is faith and virtue that we must have as Americans so that we remain free. Please, the people, keep those two in your households and in our schools. Do not distract us from our faith and our virtues. God bless America.
Thank you, Board, for being here and listening. I hope you're taking this seriously, and I hope you're taking notes because we are mad. We are mad. We are mad. I'd like to start off with two quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We're probably all familiar with them, but it's good to revisit these. "I look to a day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character." We need to live that in our schools. The second quote, "I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal." You and CRT are trying to go backwards. You're trying to create inequality between the races and the genders. You're going backwards and not forward in this community. CRT is a Marxist ideology. I think you know that. It's a Marxist ideology. You know that. It makes race the prism through which every one of its proponents analyzes everything they do in life. And that's not right. CRT states that all white people contribute to racism, are aggressively hostile to other races, and are haters and white supremacists, and that America is systematically racist. That's what CRT teaches. That's what you're teaching our kids. It is also committed to dismantling every aspect of society through unrelenting criticism. That's their stated goal. This is what you are advocating for our children and for our kids and for our community. If you do this, we will vote you out of office, and we will put in people who are sane and responsible. CRT is teaching our kids to be racist terrorists, race terrorists. That's what it's teaching them. CRT teaches people to hate themselves based on the color of their skin. And that's what you've instituted in our school system. Curriculum should be about science, math, reading, technology, and you've made it into social engineering and brainwashing. It's just unbelievable. You have betrayed the faith and trust these parents and this community have put in you. And you will be removed if you do not remove CRT, BLM, gender identity ideology, and other socialist garbage that you have in our schools right now. With all due respect, you may have many degrees, several degrees, or advanced degrees on this board. But if you believe that this will do anything but harm to our children, you are woefully ignorant. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sonia Marsick. I have three children. Two all have gone to Mener, two graduated before COVID. And I have a child who's technically a first grader. We actually had to go through K-12 last year. So my topic's very different than most of this room, to a degree, because you guys focused, a lot of your inclusion issues, on race instead of what inclusion involves, which includes children with special needs. You did not implement a proper program, whether it be in school or out of school, for children with severe special needs or rare conditions. My daughter cannot wear a mask medically or physically, cannot handle wearing a mask for an entire school day. So right there, that eliminates her. Aside from the fact that it's out of your hands, we do have everything that happened last year with COVID. So with her medical, that limits her. So being at home through your district or K-12 was our choices or choosing an alternative homeschool. We chose K-12 because, just like everybody else last year, everybody had figured it out on a whim. I find that you guys weren't able to accommodate children with special needs more accordingly. Sitting, any student, any one of these parents to have their kids sitting on a device as if they're in a regular school day is absolutely ridiculous, let alone a child with special needs, who, that's a huge thing to ask them to do. She is, would have been in kindergarten last year, technically first grade this year. And this kind of learning is incredibly difficult for especially children with special needs. And I really think you need to take and stop focusing your inclusion just on your CRT and race matters, but you need to remember the definition of inclusion, and that's not just one race. That is including multiple races. That's including those with special needs. And find a more appropriate way to educate our students. I would love someone to help answer those questions as to what you can do differently so that I can give her the options of that education.
Hello, my name is Barbara Kilfoyle. I have emailed all of you as well as emailed my senator and emailed ACLU in complaint of your recent August 3 non-re requirement to wear masks. As a 1990 graduate of Mener High School, I was given the education to go beyond to get a scholarship at Case, to become a nurse, to then get my master's in healthcare administration and become a hospital administrator. I became a director of critical care. I do not want to see anybody in this room get this COVID. I have had the patients. I have cared for the patients. In home healthcare, I've had to move them to hospice. You do not want this. And I do not want this for my children. I have a child who is nine years old and who is not eligible for the vaccination. I have a 12-year-old who is eligible and received his vaccination. And that was my choice. It is not my daughter's choice. There is no choice for the 12 and under crew. There is nothing except for what we already applied. We already applied all these great layered measures to an unvaccinated population for the 2020, 2021 school year. And as you've said in multiple of your video updates, it did stop the transmission of the virus within school. And you don't want the transmission of the virus within the school. You don't want it. Because if you get it, then you're liable for it. School is liable for it, especially if you remove the mandates. As a nurse, I do not want this on people, but I would treat them the same. That is one thing that my education, both here and Mennor Schools, taught me, was to treat everybody with humanity. And that was one thing that followed me through my nursing school. And it taught me coast-to-coast, as a travel nurse, to take care of people regardless of their color of their skin, their religious background. And that is the foundation that was given to me through the Mennor Public Schools. I really hope you rethink this decision not to require the mask mandate. It stops the respiratory droplets. It does not affect your CO2 or your O2 levels. Those are gases. We learned about gases back in chemistry. It stops the droplets. That is a foundation of medical practice and why your surgeon wears a mask. Why I wear a mask when I'm taking care of patients. You don't want your doctors wearing masks when you're under. Well, then, this is just totally... They're not believing in science. So I hope you believe in science the way I believe in science. And I thank you.
Hi, my name is Deb Francis Miller. I did not plan on doing this today, or any day. I have to ask your forgiveness, be first, because every mask I see in this room freaks me out. Totally freaks me out. My brother died. He didn't have to die. He died with my mother watching him through a window in a nursing home. She wouldn't even open up the window, those good nurses, this much. We watched him in feces and urine. Yeah, exactly. He had to die. Then, two months later, or three months, my husband's sister died the same way. She was terrified to go to the hospital. She separated from her grandchildren. So she did not go, and she died of a lung embolism. I'm surprised they didn't call those both COVID. My brother ended up dying because he stopped eating. He was so depressed. And those are eight people in my life in the last year that have died, but not from the China flu, and I don't care what you call it. They didn't die from that. They died from isolation, masking, abuse, getting kicked out of drugstores, grocery stores. What is going on? Anybody who says they're a Christian, I mean, I don't want to bring... Yes, I do. I want to bring God, because if God wasn't in... If God was still in the school system, we wouldn't be here. The kids would be... Basic reading, writing, and math. Yes, "love does not keep a record of wrongs," and other things. But I see you guys in these masks, and I think you're all killers. You killed eight people that I know, and I had to bump fist with a priest. No hugs, no friends, lockdowns. And you guys are all fine, thinking you're altruistic, calling me a killer because I didn't wear a mask. I can't wear a mask. I have a medical exemption. No one accepted it. Do you guys really think we think you care about our children? No, we do not. Because if you did, you'd take the damn mask off.
My name is Diane Populous. I do not have any children in the school. My son is 32. He went through the Mennor system. And I am 67, and I look around, and I'm pretty much a lot older than a lot of people in here. I've had 25 years' experience in the schools, to which I'm currently still working at a school. Pretty much everything I wanted to say about CRT and masks have already been said. I just want to conclude my speaking with... When my son came here, he was prepared for every Orchard Shore Mennor. He did so well that Mennor had given him a partial academic scholarship to Ohio State. So we're talking back in 2008. We had a great school system here. My son was the only one in my family that never went to Catholic school. And he shined up against anybody else. I teach PSR at my parish. And when these fourth graders were telling me what they were being taught in the schools, I thought, wait, when I sent my kid to school, I sent him for eight hours with the... trusting our educators that they were going to teach him the right thing. And now, you have dictated and lost the trust of parents by sneaking this program into these kids. And after 25 years of the school, being in schools, I have never been more disgusted, ashamed, and embarrassed of a school board for doing what you have done to our kids. I have a seven-year-old granddaughter. Fortunately, she is in a Catholic school. But I don't know where she's going to be in three years. And this has to stop now, this teaching. It has to stop now. It cannot continue, because our country is already screwed up. We all know that. And I mean, these masks, I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. So it has to stop now.
Hi, my name is Cindy. I have two children in the Mennor Public Schools. And I myself, as well as my husband, are Mennor High School graduates. And first, I want to say that cloth masks are proven to not protect you. It's N95 masks. So unless you are going to provide N95 masks for every student, the masks are useless. So I want to go with how the CDC is recommending masks. The CDC also recommends that every child receives their childhood immunizations, correct? Do you know that in the Mennor Schools or in the state of Ohio that no child has to have any vaccination to attend public school? So we are allowed to sign an exemption that our children don't need a vaccination on a recommendation from the CDC, but they have to wear... You're potentially going to tell them that they have to wear a mask based on a recommendation. And then the CDC also has nutrition guidelines that are recommendations for pediatrics in children. And in those, it's to limit sugars and fatty foods. But on your menus, you have things like Super Nachos and pizza, and you hand out sugary cereal bars. So you're not going based on recommendations for those things. So why do we have to go based on recommendations for masks? I will tell you, my children did poorly in the portions of school where they had to do virtual. So virtual is not an option for us. And my husband and I both work full-time, so we can't do that. I had a kindergartner last year, and a first-time middle-schooler. It was terrible. Constantly hearing my kindergartner's teacher tell me to... Get your grown-up. Ask your grown-up. Well, her grown-up was working, so we can't do virtual. And my child missed seven days of school last year because, simply put, she said, "I can't breathe. I won't wear the mask." And I couldn't force her to go. Then I got a letter from the school saying how important it was to send my child to school, and she missed too many days. There was also an incident with my kindergartner where she wet herself at the playground during the first few months of school. My child was potty-trained since two, never peed her pants. And when the school nurse called me, I was almost confused when she said my child had an accident. She told me that she was seeing more incidents of young children wetting their pants that year at the beginning of the school year. And when I asked my daughter, when she came home, why she didn't say something, especially since she'd never had an accident before, she said, "I tried to speak up, but they didn't hear me." I will tell you, the emotional and the developmental things that have gone on with my children this year is they're falling back and missing assignments that they would have never missed had they been in school the whole time. But also, my son, his biggest thing about him is every one of his teachers throughout his entire life, he's 12, throughout his entire school year. Your son's smile is amazing. Your son is so happy and vibrant. I can't wait to see his smiling face every day. I didn't hear it one single time last year. Not once. Not one time. Nobody knows what my kid's face looked like in that middle school.
Hi, my name is Sandy Richards. I'm not good at public speaking, but I feel it's important that parents speak out. First of all, Mr. Porter, thank you very much. You've done an excellent job, in my family's opinion, on keeping parents informed and your decision-making up until this point. Thank you for making masks optional going into this year. I really hope that you keep it that way. I have a first grader, an eighth grader, and a ninth grader. And I'm very close to my children. I'm home a lot with them. I'm very close to them. And the past year, I have watched all three of them struggle socially, academically, and mentally. So by giving us the option to let them take their masks off, you're going to help my children thrive. And I don't speak for other people, and I don't speak for other families. But I know there are hundreds of other families in my shoes where masks are hurting them mentally. And there are... I would not want to be in your shoes, because I know it's a very heated debate. And there are great points that nurse, a great point. I would never want to see anybody in the hospital be a nurse. You're in a tough situation. I fully respect everything that you said, but I'm on the other side of it. And by letting us make the decision, you're accepting both sides. And I feel that that's the best way to go. So thank you. You've been amazing. I praise everything that you've done up until this point. It's fantastic. Thank you all the parents for coming. Please keep them optional. Please don't forget our kids' mental health. To me, that is just as important as physical health.
Evening. It's good to be back here again. I would like to ask you, since you're all educators, do any of you know the American view of government? Can anyone here tell me what the American view of government is from our founding fathers? It says that God gives us... God exists, number one. So if you teach our kids anything that God exists, you're going against the Constitution and breaking your oaths. All of our rights don't come from anybody but God himself. He gives them to us. And they're inalienable and immutable. That means they can't be changed, and you can't be taken away, even little bit by little bit, okay? And the governments are only created... Your job is to make sure our kids are assured of understanding that, what I just told you, and also understanding that they get and you secure their God-given rights. That's your job in your schooling. I'm going to give you a quote here by John Adams. "Rights are antecedent to all earthly government. Rights cannot be repealed or restrained by human laws. Rights are derived from the great legislator of the universe, Thomas Jefferson, on the other side of the extreme during that day." Thomas Jefferson said, "Government is to declare and enforce only our natural rights and duties, and take none of them from us." Okay? George Washington, "A free people ought to be armed." A free people ought to be armed. These days, I guarantee you, you should all go out and buy a gun. Really, go buy a gun. You need it right now. George Washington also said, "A free people ought to be armed." And he said, "No man should scruple or hesitate a moment to use arms in defense." You're hurting children. You're being abusive. And if you think that that legal notice that I gave you last time, it didn't get recorded by your city council, your city attorney, but I assure you, it's been recorded for violating the Nuremberg War Crimes Code, the Geneva Convention Code, the UN Charter, the International Criminal Court laws, the U.S. Constitution, and the Declaration of Geneva, all of which they have been recorded at. Okay, so not here by your council, but they have been, I assure you. And we're going to take everything you own if I hear anything but masks are no good. Now, can I kindly allow... Do you... Well, ask one other thing. Do you know what the dirtiest part of your body is? Your mouth. So you can take your underwear off and let us see your face. You're making our kids stick their face in their underwear for seven hours a day. How imbecilic are you? Should be ashamed of yourself. That is a futile...
Hi, I forgot to tell you my name. It's Michelle Pokelsak. I previously worked as an administrative assistant at an alternative school, Junior High High School. Some of you may or may not remember me. But I've been in the school district. I lived in Mennor for 20 years, and Mennor on the Lake for 15. So I've been around the school district for quite some time. Now, many of you may not remember or were not around in the '90s, when I had children in the school district. But we had a problem with our school board. We finally asked all our school board members to resign. Most of them did. It was at the end of the '90s. Look it up. You're allowed to speak more than once. This is about something else. So we asked them to resign. Most of them did. We had one holdout. And eventually, she resigned. We got a whole new school board that was going to listen to the people that got them where they are. We voted some of you in. Some of you are here because you're superintendent or assistant superintendent or whatever. But the ones that we voted in need to listen. We are angry. Do you have any idea why we're so angry? Because you change your mind and do it at the last minute. Because you change things on our children. We need continuity. We need to know what the hell is going on. We are angry. And if you don't get anything else out of this meeting, get that the parents want the say for their children about masks, about CRT, about values, about what the heck you're teaching. That's what parents want. Either do it or leave. Resign, give up, whatever. But don't run again if you're not going to listen to us.
Hi, it's me again. I just wanted to talk on a second subject, which I believe I'm allowed to do. Am I correct? I'm asking, I'm allowed to talk on a second subject? Okay. So number... The CRT. Mr. Buckley, I'm a little confused. And before I continue, do you have a son named Jim, too?
Jim? No.
No, you don't. Okay. Well, there was an incident. And he was one of the biggest bullies that I had in school. When I went to school, I didn't have very, very many friends. And I know what it's like to be bullied. And you're sitting up here, especially Ms. Mary, you commented on will-be parents, about how you had an issue with will-be parents a couple of months ago because they were not requiring masks anymore. I'm just a little curious on how you can sit here and say that you're all for diversity when will-be parents are more diverse than you, more diverse than Mennor, which, according to Mr. Porter, when I spoke to him, he was very concerned because Mennor is primarily white. It seemed to be an issue with him. But I don't understand, if Mennor is so primarily white, and that's an issue, and you want more diversity and inclusion, why are you sitting here being critical of a place where we get along better, like we do? This isn't an issue. I got onto the pool almost every day. We see people of all different colors and creeds, and we all get along just great and fine. So number one, I don't know where the issue is, because we're all... We all get along. We like each other. And if you think that you're going to lead the way to make sure that other people are accepting and everything, then maybe you should show that in the way that you actually address us. I mean, we walk in here, and you treat certain parents like, you know, like they're less than because they're not going by what you want. And I mean, I'm with her. I think that you all should resign. I think you should. You guys are very politically driven. You don't listen to us. Mr. Porter lied directly to our face, telling us that he was not... There was no plans to teach CRT. And within a week, we learned that the teachers were already taking the training, and that it was definitely the direction that they were going. And then when I was talking directly to you on the phone about the situation where my son is in, and I'm not even going to bring it up in this room, you seemed concerned, like that was a real problem and that you weren't okay with it. And you continued to lie to me personally, saying that it was something that they would... That it was never going to happen. They weren't going to do CRT because it was too divisive, and it was too much. And I got an email later that day showing me slides of CRT that you were teaching the kids. You lied to us, and you should resign.
I'm going to speak again on the CRT, just because I'd like to know what you're going to do and present to children who have multiracial homes, because I do. I have a son from a previous relationship who is in... Without... Whatever. He's white, okay? And then my husband is half-black, and we have a biracial daughter together. How is that going to be presented as far as the CRT? How are my two kids going to learn something but have a different view presented to them? How is one child going to feel like the oppressor, and one child going to feel like the victim in this? And they're in my same household. They're going to come home in my same household and have different views presented to them, because one is partially black and one is white. And I speak on behalf of... My best friend also has biracial children, and she's in the same predicament, not able to be here today. But how are we going to treat that in our households? How am I going to explain that in my household? And how am I going to explain mom versus dad? Did you... Can I... Actually, you know what? Did you guys watch the slideshow? Because I saw it. Did any of you watch it, or was it just the teachers? Did any of you watch the slideshow that was presented for the teachers?
I saw parts of the slideshow.
But you didn't see the whole thing?
I did not see the whole thing.
So your teachers are required to watch it, but as the superintendent, you did not see the whole thing. Have any of you reviewed those? Wait, have any of you else looked at it? I'll resign.
I have.
You've watched it. Do you have an outward opinion on it, or are you just in agreeance with it?
Mrs. Breiner, I would like to speak, if I'm not interrupted.
You're fine. I'm good.
We have no... I stand by, we don't have a plan to recommend, adopt, or teach critical race theory to our students. We are teaching the state standards, which at times includes that students should view topics from multiple perspectives. We will not teach that any race or culture is superior or inferior to another. We are not...
It talks about... I mean, that's a whole conspirator.
We didn't vote on those...
What are you doing to our kids?
You need to grow a spine and stand up.
What is whiteness? Because it definitely talks a lot about whiteness.
And open security.
We didn't vote for the state school board. These are the evils.
You have to use your part of courage.
And we know it's DEI with the Better Lessons. It's not CRT. It could be LMNOP, okay? It's the same.
It's not.
And you know it was, we know it was.
Just tell us the truth.
It's an awful thing what you gave to those teachers.
All your kids are breaking up our...
And just so you know, and how...
We all got that. We all got to view that, and it came from somewhere. Think about it.
There are teachers who are not real anxious to take this on.
And in all honesty, you should excuse yourself because you're the worst of all of them. You're one male.
At least own it. At least own it. If you, I mean, seriously, Mr. Towns supports CRT, stands on it, and says it, like, absolutely. I can at least respect that. You are hiding behind the veil of... No, it's not. We're calling it, it's not. We're calling it. You're lying. You believed in it, you wouldn't be lying.
You're all sitting there hiding behind your mask.
You should step down. Is that... Am I good to go? So, good evening. Thank you all, parents, students that are still in the room, board members, treasurer, superintendent. I want to commend you, first of all, for your composure. This is a very hostile environment. I do ask that while I'm speaking that you don't speak, because I think the setup was for those who are speaking to get in line, to come to the mic and speak. So respectfully, respectfully, I do ask that you, I got two minutes and 22 seconds. I have two minutes and 19 seconds, so I ask that you just wait. I can stay here after the meeting if you would like to talk to me personally for anything that I'm going to say. So again, I do thank you, parents and students. I thank you, teachers, staff that are still here. I thank you as well. It is very important that we continue to speak our values, our beliefs, our positions, wherever they come from. I think that it's very, let me stop. Please, please, I ask that you, please. Wherever your values come from, whatever your beliefs are, continue to speak them. This is, again, it's a very volatile space. A lot of things, we're not going to always agree. But as a part of the United States of America, we have to stay together, better together. So I want to clarify, I want to clarify a couple of things. As one who's a part of a couple of initiatives, one, and I really appreciate Superintendent Porter saying, "What is taught is the Ohio State Standards, period. If it's not Ohio State Standards, it's not getting taught to kids." What we're talking about, or what I hear about Better Lesson, was presented to educators, not students. So just when you talk about it, let's be precise. And I did say, it's an opportunity to open the minds and present information to teachers. It was not a mandate for that to translate into the classroom. It was not teaching students. So I think that is a misconception that has been spread rampantly in this space. I just want to clarify just a little bit. The other thing I would like to clarify is that I think it's really important, board members, that we create spaces for this type of conversation, not at the board meeting. I don't know if there's an opportunity outside of this where we can get together and talk about, because one of the concerns I hear from families about being involved, not making decisions for us but with us, and creating opportunities outside of this space to do that very thing. So if that opportunity came for that, I think that would be a great... Thank you.
I promise I won't speak very long, but between my husband and I, we have 64 years in special education. We are teachers. And I think the parents, a lot of these parents, we've done levies, we've worked your levies, we voted for Menner, we moved to Menner. The autistic community, the special ed community, you are not even addressing. Several parents got up here, brave moms, who spoke what they have to go through. It's hard enough being a single mom, let alone no income, and you have children who can't go to school, be taught, because they can't wear a mask. You guys say you care, but we're not seeing it. We're seeing just the opposite from you. You're, "Oh, we love our special ed community. Oh, we have cheerleaders. Oh, we do this." Really? There's more. It's a spectrum. And there are people over here you have totally discriminated against and neglected, those children.
Okay. If we're finished with the public speaking, we're going to wrap up our meeting for now. Nothing at this time, I'm sorry.
We keep getting interrupted. I have not had a chance to talk without getting interrupted.
Did you want to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, board members, and thank you, Annie Payne, for stepping up and running for school board and...
Dianopolis.
My name is Anna Perick. I live on Menner Road. The SARS-CoVid, or the SARS coronavirus 2 has not been isolated. The CDC has said this much. The CDC, last Sunday, two Sundays ago, acknowledged that the PCR test cannot test for SARS coronavirus 2. The PCR test cannot distinguish, per the CDC, between SARS and influenza. So while we're testing kids across Ohio and here in Menner, what test will we be using? If the PCR test cannot test for coronavirus or SARS coronavirus 2, how do you determine whether or not a student or a teacher has said virus? We also know that the PCR test can be manipulated. Depending on the revolutions that a test undergoes increases the probability of testing positive. So if the test is run at 17 revolutions, the subject test most likely will not test positive. But if you cycle the test at 40 revolutions, you're more likely to come out with a positive. So what are you using here in Menner? Could you talk with the Lake County Health Department and get back to us on, how many, are we going to continue to use the PCR test on teachers, faculty, and students, on a test that the CDC itself said cannot differentiate between the flu and SARS? Additionally, the PCR test is being phased out as of December 1st, 2021. So in four months, this test is history, and this school district, or whatever labs you're using, will be required by CDC guidelines to use a different test. So could you all look into that and let us know, how are you determining whether or not someone is COVID-positive? Or not even... Okay, so, and then I just wanted to say, like, you're all wearing face masks, and it's very difficult to know who is even speaking. I mean, this last go-around with the CRT where it got kind of a bit volatile in here, I was sitting back there, and I could not, I could not determine who was speaking. And was it, was it you, sir?
I was trying to.
Okay, so I'm a 40-year-old, and I can only imagine what a 12-year-old or a 15-year-old that might have, you know, is sitting in a classroom with 30 students, and his teacher is muzzled, I'm sorry, wearing a face mask. I mean, how are students going to learn when they can't see the teacher's mouth moving? You, how does a child receives affirmation with a smile? "Great job, Jimmy. Great job." Like, you see the smile. How do we affirm our kids and have enthusiastic teachers when we can't even smile? I mean, it's the most basic human form of communication. You're elected on a local, on a local level. You're to use your logic, your reasoning, your independent research to come up with what is best for this school district. So I would say the CDC has been wrong on so many things. The Delta variant that we're hearing about cannot be isolated either, but we're hearing that there was an outbreak in Massachusetts, and 74% of the individuals that have this, had this variant were vaccinated, were vaccinated. So the CDC has recommended that individuals get vaccinated, yet we're seeing that the individuals that are vaccinated are the ones that are now the breakthrough cases with the Delta variant. So I would be very skeptical about taking the CDC's advice on anything, because they've been wrong all along. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And I, you know, like, again, if you could talk with the Lake County Health Department and let us know what test and what RPMs or revolutions are, you know, being used, and maybe we should consider maybe using clinical evaluations.
Thank you.
Given these tests cannot differentiate between the flu or SARS. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we wrap up? All right, we'll take a motion to move into executive session to discuss employee negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes. We don't expect to do any voting this evening, so you can stay or you may leave. Thank you.